I want to take this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You.
Hello?
Yep. We'll have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Noonan.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Alderman Rosica.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is Mr. Bernie Nager here this evening?
There he is. Come, Paul. David Bola.
Yes, sir.
Can you come up here also? Thirty years of dedicated service.
Mark, you can take a picture.
Yeah. This is a certificate of appreciation awarded to Bernard Nager. On behalf of the City of St. Genevieve, I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation for thirty years of service on the St. Genevieve Board of Adjustment. Thank you very much for your service.
You're not required to stay, Bernie.
Thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Take us to the city administrators' report.
Okay. I met with another developer on the Progress Park property that was referred to us by Alderman Smith. And he's called me and asked for additional information, so that's another possibility. We will be having closed session to talk about the disposition of that property after the regular meeting. The water tower welding is continuing. Steve reported to me that he's been out there and they're just going to be going vertical here probably next week, so it's going to start going up. I had consulted with Cochran because concerned about, not concerned about it, but to make sure that there's a third-party examination of the welds because that's pretty important. And they do an X-ray test and those now have been done. I'm still pursuing this Fish and Wildlife acquisition of property on the east side of the levee. Figuring out a legal description for what was acquired by the Joint Levee Commission has proven more problematic than I had expected. So I think as an alternative, I've kind of put the burden back on the Fish and Wildlife Commission and said, if you want to acquire a portion of this property, you define what it is and come back to us with your proposal, and they're amenable to this. And then we'll worry about how to transfer the balance of the property later. And so they went over to the courthouse and called Dave Weber, and I think they're going to try and come up with a description. And then we'll have that Joint Levee Commission reconvene and talk about what reservations need to be put in that conveyance so that the levee district has what they need to do their work. And we'll get that going, and we'll worry about the rest of it later. We had our formal meeting of the downtown TIF Commission. There's this issue of sequestering properties so that they will sink or swim on their own merits without having to worry about the performance of the overall district. They set a deadline of November 13th for people to let know if they wanted to be considered for being sequestered. In, if, that's supposed to mean if one is received. Anyway, we're scheduling a meeting on the 14th to consider the revision of the boundaries with those properties being considered. Then we'd have a public hearing, and then we would, after the public hearing, respond by making whatever changes might need to be made, but come to you by December 13th with a recommendation from the Commission. The park board met to consider the proposal from AT&amp;T. Representative Scheer tonight, since it's a real estate lease question, we're going to reserve that for closed session after the regular meeting. The headson engineer looked at the sidewalk proposal that I mentioned to you last time we met, and they proposed a project that was $453,592, which is not exactly what I anticipated, but the main problem was a new bridge over the creek. So I called them and said, you know, there's already a bridge over the creek, and they know about it, I mean, they know it's there. And I said, maybe we could work with Jordan Fett to put the trail kind of along the creek on their property, connect up with the existing pedestrian bridge, and then do a sidewalk from there, and that would take out that $150,000 or some major portion of that $150,000 figure. We'd probably have to do some renovations to the existing bridge. So they sent a guy down today to evaluate it, and they'll let me know tomorrow if it can be made ADA compatible, compliant. So that's really the issue, whether it can meet the ADA standards. In addition to that, I've come up with a couple of things that happened since I wrote this report. Back when we bought our new software package, we purchased the software to do online billing, and we implemented it first in the court system. We weren't sure how it was going to be compatible with everything else. Turns out, it worked out pretty well. We recently had a situation where a customer sent in their utility bill, it didn't get to us for five days, and so by the time it got to us, it was past the due date. The computer system records the payment the day we post it, and we can't backdate that because it's being done today you're doing it. And so the customer complained about late charge because they put it in the mail in a timely fashion. We don't have any way to reconcile it, but we decided that since this online bill pay is working for the courts, that we would implement it for the utility bills. So now people will have, as of today, I guess, an alternative way of paying their bill. There's a convenience charge associated with that, it's 4%, and we don't charge it. It's charged by the service company. So they pay their bill, and so if you had a, you know, what's a typical bill line is pretty cheap. What's a $70 bill, you know, you can pay an extra 28 cents in order for the privilege of paying it online. You'll recall several months ago that you approved the establishment of a policy whereby we offer additional compensation to employees who receive professional certifications. Two people have taken advantage of that. One is Lisa Kemper. She is a professional, a certified court clerk now, and has received the award attendant to that. And the other is Pam Meyer, who is now a certified city clerk. Now, the court clerk just sent a nice little plaque to Lisa. The City Clerks Association sends proclamations and asks that they be read into the record. So hold on to your seats. Whereas Pam Meyer has been a public servant of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, and its citizens since 2003, and is currently active with the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association. And whereas Pam Meyer has demonstrated a desire to enhance her skill as a municipal clerk by pursuing additional training with the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association, as well as training within her Southwest Division and from Jefferson College. And whereas the intent and goal of the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association is to encourage and provide a certification program for continued education and personal development of Missouri municipal clerks, and Pam Meyer is a perfect example of what can be achieved as a municipal clerk. And whereas Pam Meyer, having demonstrated her dependability, leadership, and desire to learn, was awarded the designation of Missouri Registered City Clerk by the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association on October 2nd, 2018. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on this day, October 2nd, that the City of St. Genevieve, which is now the 10th, the 11th. The City of St. Genevieve recognizes the accomplishment and designation of Missouri Registered Clerk as achieved by Pam Meyer. So, congratulations.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Tomorrow, starting tomorrow, the University of Memphis, the University of Memphis, it's like these seismic research university for this part of the country, maybe for the whole And they're going to be doing some seismic testing. So they're going to be going around town, put this instrument on the ground, and they're going to hit the ground with a hammer and see what kind of readings they get because they're measuring the subsurface conductivity of the impact vibrations. That's all I know. But I'm letting you know, and whoever might be watching, that if you see people running around town banging on the ground with a hammer, it's okay. That concludes my report.
Bob?
This district is sequestering, can you?
Run through it?
Yes, just.
Okay. When the downtown TIF was first established, to provide an incentive for the conservation of buildings within the TIF district, it's a conservation slash economic development TIF. There are three reasons you can do a TIF, those two, and blighting. But we didn't blight downtown. So the idea is that a developer buys a building, owns a building, comes in with a plan to make improvements to the building, and under the TIF, he can recapture the portion of his expense for the eligible expenses from a note that the city gives him. And the note calls for payments out of the increment, which is created by his investment. So we established it in 2013. The increment was the 2012 tax base, both for real estate, two elements, and sales tax. The pilot is the real estate and economic opportunity taxes or the ETS. And if the project goes as planned, the real estate value should rise, and the sales tax above the 2012 base should increase, and the money that's available is then used to pay on that note. Any money that remains in this special fund that's set up, the Special Allocation Fund, after that is available to the city to make improvements within the district. The problem is that the nonprofit organizations bought up significant properties in the district, a nonprofit organization, and removed those properties from the tax rolls. And the Lucent Building became vacant, and the owner of the Lucent Building requested a reduction in its assessed valuation because it's now not productive. And that was done. The TIF called for both the project to meet its base and for the base of the overall district to be met. And when those properties were taken off the tax rolls or significantly reduced, the 2012 base for the payment in lieu of taxes, the real estate taxes, wasn't being met. So no matter how successful the project may have been, a distribution couldn't be made for the failure of the overall district to meet the base. We later got an opinion that we could consider the sales tax and the real estate base separately, and if the sales tax base got met and the project base got met, we could make a distribution for sales taxes. So the two projects that we have weren't getting distributions as they had anticipated because the base wasn't being met. By revising the boundaries and removing the not-for-profit projects and originally removing the Lucent Building, we would have brought the base back down to where it would function. Well, along the way, a property owner said, you know, I would love to use the TIF, but it's not functioning. I would like to set up my own TIF. I don't know if you can do that. So his lawyer and Gilmore Bell got together and decided that you could revise the boundaries of the TIF and sequester individual properties so that they are kind of, they're no longer subject to the base, the overall TIF district base being met. They're only subject to their real estate and sales tax base being exceeded. So they're going to be set aside. I think there are going to be a few of those. And we've got basically the Lucent Building, the, I call it ammonia building. A few projects that have, and maybe three other people who have requested it. So I think there are going to be five or six possible sequestered pieces of property. And if they didn't do projects, they would only have to worry about meeting their own real estate and sales tax base in order to get.
What was their base year?
2012. That can't change. It's 2012 forever, for the next 20 years.
So each property then would be based on their 2012 tax productivity?
So if you collected $100,000 worth of sales taxes, that would be extraordinary in 2012, and you collected $125,000, then there'd be a $25,000 increment that would go into the Special Allocation Fund and be available for paying them back.
So if they were making it at the time, it would be zero?
It would be zero. Audubon was zero. ALS Pooter was zero for the sales tax, obviously, the real estate tax was there.
So who inherits the cost each time one of these parties wants to basically set up their own district?
It's being done as part of this process we're doing. Now, should somebody come in that doesn't get it done this time?
Correct.
And say, I want the same treatment? It would be up to this board to decide whether or not to do that. You don't ever have to do it again. But you would reconvene the TIF Commission, as we just did, and consider that next request.
Seems like everybody would want to do that.
Well, you might not want to do it because you're going to, I would recommend that they have to pay the cost of reconvening the TIF Commission, and it's going to be, I don't know, probably $5,000. Because we've got, 300 letters have to go out, and notices have to be posted, and lawyers have to be hired, and soon.
David, you're up.
All right. Hello, Gilman. Field staff report there on parades this Monday, got one situation there on purpose. Hanging zoning. Joe's not here to hear that. We did have a Board of Adjustment meeting for the first time in, I believe, four years, and there was a variance approved. Flood plane management, new maps were received, so you're going to hear more about this in upcoming meetings. They go from preliminary status to pending status, and they have to be read into, the new numbers have to go into ordinance, be read twice before February 15th. So more information to come there, but that's on the horizon. Property maintenance, you see some numbers there. I added some additional percentages down at the bottom so you can kind of see how things are rolling. Did review 31. As I review more, if you remember when I started this, I said we tried to review the worst first. So a lot of them are just falling under really no issue, like there's a little bit of paint missing, and that's really not a code violation. So.
To date, no enforcement action has been required for people who have voluntarily complied.
One citation has been issued, but you know, that wasn't code enforcement.
Right.
Yeah. There are a few that have stretched out, and I'm working with them, talking with them, trying to get enforcement, but there are several that have also complied nicely, so. And you have the numbers there. Any questions on that? I have one other thing I wanted to bring up to you all. Yes, sir. Flood insurance rate map.
And I like the way you did that, Dan. I thought that was pretty interesting.
I thought that would give you a little more insight into actually how it's working out.
Yeah.
So not on the staff report, but something else that falls under disposition is rental properties. We have an ordinance on the book that requires us to send letters to every rental unit, which I looked up, there's approximately 875 units in the city. That could be anything from a house to an apartment to Butterfield. So, and we have to send a letter to each one. I sent one to each owner, not each unit, so it was about 300 letters, spent, I don't know, four or five hours, quite a bit of paper, postage, so on. And so that got me to thinking, you know, this is a little bit more of a digital world we live in, maybe we shouldn't be sending letters out as much as just posting that information. And we do post it also, online and in the paper for two weeks. We asked for rental registration. That led me to call a few other municipalities, Festus, Perryville, a few others, and find out what they do, which also led me into what do they do as far as occupancy inspections? What do they do as far as enforcement of occupancy inspections? How do they keep track of rental properties? And how are ordinances compared to those municipalities? What kind of work are we doing that we really don't need to do? What do we need to do that we're not doing? So in talking with Martin about that, I thought it might be opportune to pull together a committee of some sort to talk about rental, landlord registration, occupancy inspections, whether they require the costs, nuisance reporting, things like that. Some of you have brought up other issues like, and this couldn't all be talked about maybe in one committee, but the number of occupants in a house, things like that. But just wanted to kind of throw it out there to you all. Yes, sir.
I understand our Main Street property, there was a development at a recent municipal court.
I mean, I know that Ms. Gegg showed up.
And basically what's taken place since then, or what?
I wasn't there, but I was told the warrant was stayed until the 18th of this month, which means she's required to show back up because they needed more information. I have since sent that information to our prosecuting attorney.
Just waiting for some cost on that property.
Sent her a bill for approximately $2,300. She has 30 days to pay it.
If she doesn't pay it.
She doesn't pay it, then we'll send that to the county collector. Doc, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to, if you don't, and I had some questions about that because that's going, she's going to be in court next week.
Maybe.
Maybe. But I say, that was a long process. So, but we'll see how that plays out, you know. But the nuisances have been abated, you know, there's a cost. I really doubt if she'll have the money to pay us, so hopefully, you know, I don't know, just with the laws we have and things, it's very difficult. But I wanted to get back at this, with the rental property issue.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good idea. I think, I've talked to Jimmy, and there's a lot of, there's ordinances and codes, we've seen this, and when we went to this, you know, with enforcing, getting people to take care of the properties, we just weren't doing it because we're afraid to, or for whatever reason. But I think this is something we need to visit, and I'm all in favor of it. I don't know, and I'm not here to, I think, you know, I want to encourage rental property and landlords, but I think there has to be accountability, not only with the landlords, but the people that are renting these properties. So I think that's something we need to really visit, and I think we need to put this, and I wanted to see what the board thought about that. You're in agreement with that.
If you're going to have a committee, I'd like to be on it.
Well, that's what I was saying. I was hoping, because one of the aldermen, either I was going to appoint him, or I'd like a volunteer. So to be on this committee, and then we're going to, I think we need to have a couple landlords on the committee, and then some.
Maybe some tenants.
Some tenants, and some people live in the city, so.
I'd like to be on the committee as well.
Okay. So, David, you'll guide us all through that, I would take it.
Yep. We'll work together to nominate some people and.
Right, right. And I want to, I don't want to just get people that always are here and want to be on a committee all the time. We need to think outside of that. I'd like to get a good mix of people on this board. And I know it's difficult, not everybody wants to volunteer, but let's challenge some people, talk to them, and try to encourage some people to be on this to, for the better of our city.
We have some responsible landlords who have.
We do?
Absolutely.
That was a statement.
Express concern about the way our codes are structured. So I think we know who they are, and we can ask them to serve, they'd be willing to serve.
Absolutely. So we'll work together, get that committee going.
That'd be great. Anything else, Sean?
Any other questions?
Great job.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Kenny took off. I take it he had an emergency? So, Gary? Do y'all have Kenny's report?
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions you had about it?
Well, we sent the second payment to the.
Kenny's coming back.
Oh, okay.
So that's all right. Gary, let's go ahead and hear your report, and then we'll fix the.
I sent the right one this month.
Did you?
Yeah. And it started off as normal, mowing weenie, which we are finally slowing down now. We've been starting to get a lot more, other smaller things completed that need to be done. We've done patching the last couple of days, we did a couple of days last week.
Everything I've asked for, I've got it patched. That's great. Appreciate that.
Been working on some streetlights down in town. We had issues with some of them, and with a couple rain days we've had, we've started making some new ones because we were out.
I want to thank you on behalf of my ward constituents for taking care of that, especially on my side of town. Thank you.
The wayfinding signs are complete. We were missing a couple. Lawrence got them. We got the rest of the caps we didn't have, so everything is done on them. Been doing maintenance on Moore's equipment, and did overseeing of paving projects, went pretty well.
And I want to thank Gary for being more involved in our street projects than maybe we have been in the past because he stays on it, catches things, he's done a good job.
And this one was a little different than the last couple because the guy that bid the jobs was no longer with the company, so, and he didn't leave them much as far as notes and that went, so.
Yeah. Well, we didn't did that. Yes, you did.
So it turned out okay. There was a couple rough moments in there, but it all worked out.
I got a question for you. I've already been to the levee board about this and got one of their, Vern's going to help me with this, but on October 21st, October 20th, Saturday, October 20th, at 11 o'clock, I want to do an informational meeting downtown, down at Washington and Second, and I would love for you, if you would, be there, you know, officially or unofficially. There's a lot of questions about this pump, when it gets set up, why we flood, and I just, I'm going to start out there, anybody that wants to be there at 11 o'clock, I'll bring a van down there, we're going to work there, we're going to, it's going to be hands-on, we're going to get close to the ditch, we're going to look at the levees, we're going to go out to the, out to the.
to the levy. Vern says he'll have somebody out there, maintenance people out there, they'll open it up and explain to people how the pumps work, and so everybody has a good understanding of what we do in a, in a flood event, you know, and it's good timing, because right now, we're, the Mississippi River is, is over flood stage, you know, so...
We may be closing gate.
And if you noticed, if you've noticed, down in the, also, the water, because the gates are closed at the dam, the, the water's backing up, if you look under the Main Street Bridge, you'll see water starting to back up in the town.
Gates are closed.
I don't, I would, I would think the, not our gates...
Creek gates.
The creek gates on the levy, because the dam is, the water's coming up, so otherwise the river's...
Talking about closing the gates, Sunday afternoon?
Yeah, Saturday or Sunday.
Yes. So, it'll be good timing, I mean, hopefully, we won't have any significant rain, but that's part of the problem, is when that water's up here, we're backed up, and then we have to pump. So, it'll be a good opportunity, because there are some questions, I want everybody to understand, and can we do better? Because that, that pump, we always talk about, because Washington, when the water's up on the other side, we gotta pump it across, in certain situations, so, I want everybody to see that.
What time of the game was that, sir?
That'll be at 11 o'clock on October the 20th. We're gonna meet at Washington and Second Street.
I'll be out of town.
That's okay. But Gary, you'll be there, and then Vern and some other people from the levy, work on the levy, so, anybody else who wants to come, to...
Gary, is there anything, somebody had mentioned this to me, up on Ridgeway, with the paving that we get up there, there's a grate, about metal ways down through there on the north side. I think you've seen it, Paul, but steel grate there that drops down.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a problem up there. They're old sewer grates, but it's so low, I don't, I don't know what we could do, you know? You know what I'm talking about?
Back on...
Ridgeway.
On the dead end part, or?
No.
Okay.
Up, right out in front of Mike Dickelson's...
Okay.
House, if you can...
Oh, look at that, I wouldn't wear it.
But it's, it's the storm sewer grate.
Storm sewer grate.
Right.
It's just a low spot.
It's low.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
It's been paving, I mean, it's the biggest storm by the time's there.
Oh, because of tapering in? Okay.
Yeah.
That brings up, y'all remember about those two residences on Ridgeway that...
We still got two pieces of curb to put in.
Okay.
It's, it's run up Dan when we was doing that, and it's a different mix, and so it wasn't like they could just run from there up there to do it, which I forgot about.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Really, you in here, buddy? Should have a report in front of you. We didn't have a whole lot of stuff going on last month, which was good, because we had a whole bunch of calls. We went from being below our point of last year to 20, or 12 calls above last year's time, so we had 26 calls in the month of September. Probably one of the things I want to bring to attention is the firefighter of the month this month was Bob Bonnell. If you've noticed the last three or four months, Bob Bonnell, if you notice the last three or four months, we've gotten into some of the command staff, and we've had it, one guy with 36 years, one guy with 45, Bob's got 40, and I'll be the last one they put on the page next year, and I'll have over 30 on it too. So, we've got a lot of guys with a lot of years that are running your department, we're real proud of that. For what it's worth, I did have contact with the Rosenbauer local rep again on our truck today, and he actually sent me pictures. It is in Minnesota again, it's behind schedule, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it, it's just, they're that busy right now. I have been talking to him about some things they can do to keep us happy, possibly extended warranties and things like that, but obviously, before I can commit to anything, they have to say yes, and I have to bring it back to you guys. Right now, they're talking anywhere from 45 to 60 days behind. So, I expressed, as I put in my notes here, expressed my disapproval of the timeframe, because we had a promise, and it's not keeping up with the promise. Any questions?
Hey, you all right? You have a fire call?
Yeah, we had a, a small stove fire, it was out when we got there, one of the apartments.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Before we leave reports, I just got, cut off the presses, it's not for you. It deals with smoking, so maybe it does have something to do with it. Donnie informed Pam that we've secured the Knights of Columbus Hall for the meet, for the public hearing on the smoking issue. And so it's get, it's set for 6:30 PM, November the 1st, at the KC Hall.
Thank you very much. Any committee reports? Public comments? Takes us to the consent agenda.
Martin, did you say 6:30 for that meeting, on the 1st?
Yes.
Approval, mayor.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to old business. The second reading of Bill Number 4242, An Ordinance Amending Original Agreement with Dominat Wade &amp; Mortian Incorporated, TWM, to provide a web-based mapping platform and geographic information systems for the City of St. Genevieve.
Motion approved.
Like to have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 4242 now becomes ordinance 4176.
Thank you very much. Bill Number 4243, An Ordinance Approving a Memorandum of Agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, Missouri Corporation, to Modify the Initial Professional Service Agreement, Date Adjusted August 12, 2010. I have a roll call vote.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 4243 now becomes ordinance 4177.
Takes us to Bill Number 4244, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, Authorizing a No Parking Restriction on the South Side of Progress Parkway, Starting at the Entrance to Progress Sports Complex, and Extending 260 Feet East Towards State Highway M.
Motion approved.
Have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 4244 now becomes ordinance 4178.
All righty. Before I read this bill, 4245, our second reading, is concerning to the municipal judge, going from elected to a appointed. I've had two people approach me that are feeling that they've, you know, they don't have the right to pick a, pick the judge, they think it's their right. Now, actually, one person and, and one person face-to-face, but the other one was just social media. Now, for the record, I don't want to do that to anybody, but, and looking at this, for, for what's best, for, I believe, for the city and our city court, I think doing this is, is just what we need to do. And we also put in some provisions with the guidance from, from Mark, you know, make sure that this, this is a licensed attorney qualified to practice law within the state, you know, and also, they must be a resident of the state. Also, he or she must be at least 21 years of age, and not, or not reaching his 75th birthday, or before his or her 75th birthday. He or she may not serve as a municipal judge for more than five municipalities at one time. He or she may not hold any other office within the city government, and he or she shall be considered holding a, a part-time position, and such may accept, within requirements of the Code of Judicial Conduct, Supreme Court Rule Number Two, and other employment. And with those provisions, I feel, the comment was that, well, you could set your court up how you want it, you know, and I don't believe that. I believe, for, first of all, for lifting the, the ordinance, the requirement to live in the city, we needed to do that, because it just shrank our, the amount of people that, that can even run for this position. I think it opens up the opportunity to even, you know, even to get a judge from out of town. I, I'm not opposed to that, I think that's a good idea, because I think it, there again, it just, it, you know, having somebody from in town, there's more of a chance you can have favoritism and stuff like that, so. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with our judge here, Rob does a great job, but I, I think, as far as this city, I think it's the right thing to do, and, and, and I just wanted that for the record, you know, so, but Buck, do you have anything?
I had one person that approached me about that, too. Once I explained things to them, I think they, they were clear on it.
And, and, and I've been to our city court, I don't know if any of you's been to the, to city court and see how it runs, I think it's, it's doing really well, everybody's doing a great job. Eric, do you see a problem with this?
No.
How we're doing it?
Not at all.
And mayor, I, I agree with you 100%, I think this is, this is the, the way to go, but I think there is a lot of misconceptions and about things out there in the public, and I've been, you know, trying to do my best on the Facebook to try to educate the people about why we're doing it, and, and that said, I don't know if we, if, if it wouldn't be better if, if we had, I don't know if, if you could do this or not, but have a, more of a public discussion about it, because I think there's a lot of people that initially are really opposed to this, and I think maybe it's, a little bit of education might help.
You could table the matter, and we could schedule a public hearing. Can't table a second reading?
We have to pass an ordinance pretty shortly to, for the, to set the election date, and it states in there what it, it states in there who's running, and he is up for election in April, so...
I, I think it'd be a good idea to, to talk to the public about it, but I think you need to get it done for that reason, because you're pushing up against the timeline to, to put the notice out for candidates, and if you're doing it, do it now, or you gotta wait a year, you know?
I would, my suggestion is, is, and I was, I was hoping that somebody would show up here tonight in opposition to this, and, and personally, I think on the, or have anything to say about it. And, because this was, has been on Facebook, and Don's put it out, and, and everybody's had the opportunity. I really feel that this is the right thing to do, for the hardcore, I really do.
Well, and I agree.
Actually, is the appointment...
Pardon me?
In the municipal elections, it seems like there's a margin of 20 people that decide the, the fate of our candidates. I would be curious to see how many of the people, and there's no way to know, that are, that are hesitant about this, have actually gone and voted in any municipal elections. The voter turnout for an April election is incredibly low.
Incredibly.
Well, mayor, I think in one time, the, the chief of police was an elected position in this city.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, that, and I told him that about the other people that are appointed by the board, the, the city attorney...
I, I personally feel good about going along with the second reading, you know, you guys decide, but...
I agree.
So what is the appointment process, or who would appoint that position?
Well, it's in here. Well, it's an appointment by the mayor with the consent of the, of the board.
Yeah, the board, the board, it's just like when, when we did Mark, you know? I find a candidate, you guys look at all that, and you decide who we're gonna have as, as our, our judge.
And I think that's worked well.
Yeah. So Mark, as you, you said before, it's considerably more common for it to be an appointed position, rather than an elected position. It's rare to be elected.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely the way all municipalities are moving, because we just don't have a whole lot of applicants. And there's not, there's maybe three or four licensed attorneys in, that live in the city, maybe less, and you probably only have one that's interested, and that's your current judge. It's not, I mean, it's a nice feather in the cap to be a municipal judge, and, and it's good work, but it's, it's also evenings, and, and it can be difficult. So, you, you limit your applicant pool by making the residency requirement fair, but, you know, it doesn't stop the board from only approving somebody who's a resident, you know, it doesn't mean you, you can't, as a board, majority board, to say, well, we're gonna favor a resident of the city, I mean, that's entirely appropriate when that day comes, when we make the appointments, but, you know, small cost of the election, and, and if your current judge, he, if you have a judge you really like, and he wants to move out of town, then, then he's gonna have to quit, you know, and, and that's not an ideal situation either.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second. Like to have a roll call vote?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 4245 now becomes ordinance 4179.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill Number 4248, An Ordinance Approving a Bid Proposal from Exxon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of four tasers in the amount not to exceed $5,512 for their state, for the St. Genevieve Police Department.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business? Any discussion with the, I have nothing, I've said everything to you guys, you guys have anything else to say? I think that I'd like to make a motion that would go into closed session for personnel matters and real estate.
But you have to make a motion.
I mean, I would like to entertain a motion.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have a roll call vote?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.